...America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Again, thank you all so much for being here. As we begin to get this rolling, we do have everyone present and we'll call this meeting to order. Angie, do we have any citizens' comments? Okay. Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Additions, deletions, comments?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the minutes for the Commissioners Court regular session of February the 12th as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes of February 12th as presented. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number two, consider and take action to approve a proclamation in observance of March 2nd, 2019, as Texas Independence Day. And this is something that we enjoy and do every year. With us today, if you would please, two fine gentlemen that come before us every year and read a proclamation. It is our pleasure to have them here, so please, come forward and we'll have a story at least about, on our history and everything else with the state of Texas.
I'm Lieutenant Sore, I'm the current president of the Athens James George Chapter of the Sons of the Republic of Texas here in Athens. The proclamation, want me to read it?
We can, if you'd like.
Okay. I can read part, I'll just read first part.
Okay.
Whereas March 2nd, 2019, is the 183rd anniversary of Texas Independence Day, when 56 brave Texicans and Tianans met at Washington on the Prazes to declare Texas an independent nation, signing the Texas Declaration of Independence on this date, March 2nd, 1836. And whereas these 56 men signed the Texas Declaration of Independence and continued to draft a constitution pledging their lives and fortunes and securing a free and independent Texas, despite the disastrous events occurring at the Alamo Engoliad. For information, they signed the declaration on March 2nd, the Alamo fell March 6th. And we did a little research, or tried to, and this actually came from the Sons of the American Revolution, found this man, we dedicated his grave, it's in Rust County. I'm gonna read you his bio. I wrote the bio last year and we dedicated his grave at Thanksgiving last year. And as Benjamin W. Anderson was born in January 1751 in South Carolina, Benjamin's grandfather, Abraham Anderson, accepted 200 acres on the Carolina coast in 1764 from King George III. Benjamin joined the Continental Army after the Tories killed his father, Joshua Anderson. Benjamin lived in Newberry County, South Carolina. He then accepted 900 acres in the new state of Georgia, in Green County. Benjamin was buried in 1784 in Georgia to Polly Rebecca Carrington. They had nine children before she passed in 1811 in Alabama. You'll notice he's moving. He doesn't stay, like my great-great-grandfather. Benjamin then married Margaret Jane Williams and they had 16 children. Benjamin and Margaret came to Texas from Green County, Alabama, with some of their children and grandchildren in 1834. Benjamin, the patriarch in his mid-80s, was making his last great pilgrimage. There were about 33 members of the family who made the trip from Alabama to Texas. He enlisted and served with the local militia during the Texas Revolution. He was 85 years old. He was eligible to receive a league and a labor of land. He purchased land in Nacogdoches County in what was called Blackjack. In his lifetime, Benjamin Anderson moved halfway across the continent, from South Carolina to Georgia to Alabama to Texas. He participated in two major uprisings, the American Revolution and the Texas Revolution. Benjamin loved racehorses and rode them until he broke his leg in a horse race at the very young age of only 96. See why he interested me? In 1906, Benjamin's son, wait a minute, Benjamin passed away September 14th, 1853, at the age of 102. In 1906, Benjamin's son, Thomas Howard Anderson, had this to say. And he, we moved to Texas in the year 1834 from Green County, Alabama, and landed in Sabine County and lived there awhile. We then lived in San Augustine County, then Nacogdoches County, where I spent most of my young days. My father's name was Benjamin Anderson. He was the father of 25 children, nine by his first wife and 16 by my mother. But that large family has all passed to the great beyond, except myself and one brother, George W. Anderson of Mason County. I am 83 years old, my brother is 81. In closing, Benjamin W. Anderson was born the subject of an English king and died a proud Texican.
Wow.
He was a very interesting man.
That's fantastic.
We dedicated his grave with Sons of the American Revolution and Sons of the Republic of Texas, the Saturday after Thanksgiving last year.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much for your work. Yeah, it's often forgotten that in, Mr. Luna has impressed it upon me in my time, how short a span it was between the event in the Alamo and from February 23rd until April 21st was the span of the Texas Revolution. And when you think about that changing, you think about men as just described here. Those gentlemen were of great valor and great honor and great grit. And it's good that we always remember our history because it gives context to the presence today. And if anyone wants to say anything, please do. Comments?
I think it's all been said this morning.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I came back as Commissioner, and this is one of the things that I really enjoy as Commissioner, this day, and honoring Texas, and I'm very proud that, and I remember when I got my tie, when y'all gave me the Texas tie, and I know this morning you also gave one to Commissioner Toohey. It was, it's a big honor to me and a honor that I get to wear it. So, thank you guys for, and the history lesson is always excellent. Thank you very much.
I might say, thank all of you for your service to the community. Yes, we are very proud of you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Judge, being a member of the Sons of American Revolution, by my grandfather's participation in the armed services, I approve a proclamation in observance of March 2nd as Texas Independence Day.
And I'll second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Toohey, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the proclamation of March 2nd, 2019, as Texas Independence Day. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much. Item three, consider and take action to accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Sheriff's Office for filing purposes only. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court.
Sheriff, excuse me, is that mic on?
I believe so.
Is it? Can y'all hear in the back? Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
This is the annual report that we were required to make to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and we're also required to bring it before the governing body every year for filing purposes at the clerk's office. Showed that we had a total of 1,876 traffic stops, and 1,728 of those stops were conducted and the operators of the vehicle were white or Caucasian, and that's about average of what we've been doing every year. Used to, we could file a, we used to file a report that where we claimed a partial exemption. No one in the state of Texas is allowed to claim those exemptions now. Sandra Bland required everybody to go to this form, format, so it's a new format that y'all are seeing, but we've got it all, got it filed with the Commission on Law Enforcement a couple weeks ago.
Questions of the sheriff?
And all of these are due by the end of March?
They're due by March 1st.
By March 1st?
Yes, sir.
So we're still delinquent about four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve for, or accept for filing purposes only, the racial profiling report from the Sheriff's Department. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Item number four, consider and take action to accept a $12,000 donation from the City of Athens to the Henderson County Clint W. Markson Memorial Library. This was a part of our budgetary process, if you'll remember, last year, where Athens agreed to provide a donation to help support and fund the library, which is what brings us here today, to officially accept that donation. Mrs. Nor?
The city has sent their check made out to the Henderson County Library for $12,000, and the city wants to participate in library services for the community. Most of this money goes to collections management, buying books and books on scene.
Questions, comments?
No, I'm just, the only comment is I'm very pleased to see the City of Athens continuing to support the Clint W. Markson Memorial Library. I'd hoped it would be a little bit more this year, but maybe this coming year will even be better. Anything, any support is always welcomed.
Any further comments? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved to accept the donation from the City of Athens, in the amount of $12,000 for the Clint W. Markson Library.
And I'll second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to accept the $12,000 donation from the City of Athens. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. If you would, present the check to the treasurer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Michelle.
Item number five, consider and take action on approving the Henderson County Investment Policy. Mr. Bino?
Yes, Judge, I've got the Henderson County Investment Policy, which I bring to the court every year. That's something we approve on a yearly basis. This year, of course, I need the approval so that I can put this in our deposit word contracts, which is coming up this year. So, I think everybody has had this for a couple weeks, and I understand there's no changes that needs to be made to the policy, but we put this in place just to make sure that our investments, if we have any, that are covered, you know, make sure it's done legally by the law. I've also had our county auditor, Amber Lee, she's also looked through this and she sees no changes to be made at this time as well, so I just need to get approval on this and then I'm gonna start the process for our deposit word contracts.
Questions, comments?
No questions, Judge.
No, I think you did a very good job with the policy.
And this is in the run-up to the depository contract?
And that is. We include this because our deposit word contract is paying best our funds, or doing anything with that, we need to make sure that all of those are actually covered. Right now, our deposit word bank, they actually do an excellent job with that, and I have a great relationship with them to make sure that all of our funds are actually pledged with securities. When we see a high volume of money, especially during tax season, come in, we're back and forth on the phone constantly to make sure everything's pledged, so I've never had a fall for that at all, so they do a great job with it, but this does have to go in with that because anybody on the outside, as by law, all of our funds have to be pledged with securities, so there's reason why we have this policy as well.
Anything else? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
So moved, or seconded.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Toohey, to approve the Henderson County Investment Policy. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number six, consider and take action on a resolution of support for the construction of senior affordable rental housing units located in Precinct 1. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Court and in audience, I was approached a few weeks ago by Mr. Ben Dempsey with Stone Leaf Companies, and he had asked me about a possible development in the Tool area apartment, complex development, and I told him we'd bring it before court, and he is here, Mr., so if there's questions for Mr. Dempsey, and I think Mr. Segrew is also here, and representing Stone Leaf, and be glad to tell us what the development is for the county.
Mr. Dempsey, would you like to come forward and say anything? If you would state your name and your information for the record.
Sure. Ben Dempsey with Stone Leaf Company. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come before you today. All we're asking is for your support in the form of a resolution. This is not an approval for the actual construction. We are putting in an application with the state of Texas to get a tax credit award, so what you're actually giving the support on is that application itself. Is there any specific questions that I can answer? Did you want me to give you a general understanding of the size and the scope, or?
Questions?
Yeah, I would like to hear the, just sharing with the Court, kind of what your size and where the location?
Okay. So, it's in Tool, it's technically not in the city limits of Tool, it's on the north end, and I guess north and west, just south of where the Big Daddy's Flea Market is. So, it's 72 units is what we're looking at, they're all single-story. The construction's gonna be in the form of fourplexes, I believe we're gonna have at least one or maybe two eight-plexes, as well as a clubhouse. This is gonna be restricted to age 55 and older. It will also have income restrictions based on the area median income of a four-person household. So, it's gonna be in income brackets based on the area median income of 60%, 50%, and 30% of the area median income, and we'll also have a few that have no income restrictions at all, a small number of those. If we get the resolution of support today successfully, then we will submit our application to the state on the 1st of March. We'll find out probably the 1st of August if we get the award. So, by the time that we get to the closing, get all of our financing set up in place, we're probably looking at starting the construction roughly about this time, maybe a little bit sooner than this time next year.
Do y'all have some of these facilities scattered throughout the county already?
We actually have them all over the state, so we are headquartered in the Maybank, Gunbarrel City area. So, probably closest to here, we have one in Eustis, now that's for multifamily, that one's not a senior development, but we also have one in Gunbarrel City over by the medical center, right across the street from the medical center. That one is a, for seniors, 55 and older. That one is pretty much gonna be the base model of what the one in Tool would be like as far as architectural design, roughly the same size. That one's 80 units, this one would be 72. We also, up in the Panhandle region, we have a couple of properties up there. One is, we just finished it Panhandle, which is also a senior property. We have one in the city of Dalhart, and that one's a multifamily. In the, back into this area, we also have one in, excuse me.
Chandler.
Thank you, Chandler. I was trying to draw a blank there, which is also a senior property. And then our other one is in Fairfield, Texas, down in Preston County, which is a multifamily.
And how long's your waiting list in Gunbarrel?
Gunbarrel, basically, is about a two-year waitlist right now out of 80 units. And also, the one in Chandler is about the same, about a little over a year to a two-year waitlist on that one as well. So we did do a preliminary market study to make sure that there is a demand for senior affordable housing in the area. We're still doing a full, you know, a full-fledged market study as well that will go forward as part of our, part of our application, but before we even, actually even approach the city of Tool, we always do a preliminary to make sure that there's actually a demand there first. So, we do quite a bit of due diligence ahead of time. These applications that we put forward, they can cost us anywhere between $30,000 to $60,000 just to get the application across the finish line with the state. So, that's money that's non-refundable, it's just the state's way of saying, "Thanks for doing business with us." So, we wanna make sure that we have the support of the community, that we have the demand on the ground, and we've already gotten support of resolution, or excuse me, a resolution of support from the city. We've gotten several support letters from community organizations in the area of Tool, and we did get a support letter from Representative Ray as well already.
And are, will y'all be brought into the city, or will y'all stay in the county?
We have, at the request of the city, we did go ahead and apply for annexation. It has not occurred yet, we don't physically own the land at this point. Once we get the award in August, that would be at that point that we'd close the land, then we can officially move forward with the annexation, but we are on file for annexation with the city.
Okay. And then there is, you have received no opposition for this development in that area?
Not even so much as a phone call at our office.
The city of Tool has met and approved your support, is that right?
Correct, correct. And we've met with the city on a couple of different occasions, but when we went for the official resolution support, they did give us a resolution.
Well, I wanna congratulate you on a couple of words you said, is that you did your due diligence with the city and the other, and the community around there to start off with this project, so I commend you and your company for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess just for the record, it says in your document, you are not asking for a tax abatement, this is just a resolution of support.
Correct, we're a for-profit company, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we're just asking for your support for us to be able to submit the application. I mean, we wouldn't even start construction based on this resolution. We still have to get all our engineering done, we'd still partner with the city on getting the permits, or at least the annexation if we can get that ton of time to get the permits, but either way, we're gonna meet the, whatever the local code is.
Right. And there hasn't been any abatements given on the other Henderson County developments, is that true?
Correct, correct. We are for-profit on all of our properties, yes, sir.
Anything else?
No other questions, Judge?
Mr. Dempsey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to support the resolution for the Stone Leaf Development Partners, or the Tool Development, that is, senior affordable rental housing units located in Precinct 1.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Toohey, to approve the resolution of support for the Stone Leaf Development Partners in application to the state. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number seven, consider and take action to reappoint two members to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Commissioners located in Precinct I believe we have a typo there, it should be appointing two members.
Mine says appoint.
I'll refer to the county attorney, does he have an issue with us moving, these gentlemen are not reappointments. Commissioner Toohey?
Thanks, Judge. Court, it was brought to my attention by the ESD 10 President, Mr. Thomas Frazier, that there was a couple of openings, one guy was staying on, I think he's an original board member, Jerry Boyd, his term went out on 2018, and was it Sandy Knight, I believe is the one?
Saran Knight.
Saran Knight, had already stepped down, so talking with the President, I have two guys that I would like to appoint to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 10, taking over for Jerry Boyd with a two-year appointment would be Rick Priscelli, and taking over a one-year term would be for Saran Knight would be Ben Lane. Both of these gentlemen are leaders at their jobs in the construction field and everything, and speaking with Mr. Frazier, he has agreed to accept these two gentlemen to his board, so if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to, and I believe their resumes are in your package.
In keeping with our precedent of the past, we tried to line these up to coincide with the end of the fiscal year, so in our appointments, if we could appoint them to run through December of 2020, that would keep us consistent with our precedence of movement. I know both of the gentlemen personally and find them of exceptional capabilities. Any further comments, questions? Entertain a motion.
Judge, hearing no questions, I move to appoint Rick Priscelli to a two-year term ending in 2020, and Ben Lane for a one-year term ending in 2020, to the Henderson County Emergency Services District Number 10 Board of Commissioners.
Any further questions?
I'll second his motion.
Oh, sorry. Got ahead of myself. Now, any further questions? All those in favor? Item, oh, let me start this back. Motion made by Commissioner Toohey, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the appointment of Ricky Priscelli and Ben Lane to ESD 10. Any further questions?
No questions.
Thank you. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, consider and take action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Markson and Precinct 3 Roden Bridge. Commissioner McCam?
This is an interlocal agreement between Precinct 3 Roden Bridge and the city of $5,000 a year to expire December 2020. That'll be the end of my first term, so.
This is the contract for?
This is the contract for that interlocal agreement.
Okay.
Hearing none, I move that we accept the interlocal agreement between the city of Markson and Roden Bridge Precinct 3.
Second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Gisland, to approve the, excuse me, the interlocal cooperation agreement for two years between the city of Markson and Henderson County Precinct 3. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Number nine, consider and discuss a presentation pertaining to ongoing federal opioid legislation. With us, we have our county attorney, Clint.
Yes, Judge, we also have Mr. Matthew McCarley, he's with the Beers Law Firm, which is one of the law firms that I believe you've discussed some previous information. He is here and prepared to talk for a few minutes, I have asked him to kind of keep it brief, and I will mind and measure between executive session ending, so if there's specific discussions about the contract negotiation and things like that, then we can reserve that for the executive session, it'll be coming up later in the, in the certain of this is ongoing litigation. Matthew is here, and he'll say a few words about it and talk about it.
Please, come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Judge McKinney, County Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. My name's Matthew McCarley. Again, I'm with a law firm. Again, I'm with a law firm in Dallas, and our firm represents cities, counties, and states in the opioid litigation that's going on across the country. We had previously forged some material, and I brought some printed material that I can give to you that shows how this epidemic has harmed Henderson County, and specifically in what quantities opioids are being sold and distributed in this county. That specific information that we have came from the CDC. But the most accurate information that we have, it comes from what's called the Arcos data. The Arcos database is a database that's maintained by the DEA, and it tracks the manufacturer and distribution of every single opioid pill in the United States. And from that information, we'll be able to tell exactly what manufacturers and distributors sold and what quantities into Henderson County. And the reason why that's important is because we believe that it's a way in excess of amount that should have been sold. Just to highlight a couple of facts, and we can talk more in detail later in executive session, but just for your constituents' information, this epidemic has not left any city or county in the country untouched. And the reason for this epidemic, or there's a lot of reasons for it, but two of the biggest reasons, drivers of this epidemic are the manufacturers of opioids, miseducated doctors and lied to them, and told them that opioids were rarely addictive. In fact, they said, "There's only a 1% chance that a person has to become addicted to opioids." Well, we know now that that's just not the case. It's not true. The company that told that lie, Purdue Pharmaceuticals, who, by the way, the state of Texas is sued, paid a $634 million fine for that lie to Congress. But not only did they tell that lie, but they miseducated doctors and told them that opioids were safe, and that they could be prescribed for long-term chronic pain. And because of that, doctors were freely and have freely over-prescribed opioids to individuals. And we know from the CDC data that if you just take opioids for 10 days, you have a 20% chance of becoming addicted. And obviously, it goes up the more days you take it, just 10 days. And so because of that, the manufacturers of opioids are liable to counties like Henderson County for the damages that's caused to Henderson County. And this is a direct, actually indirect, tax on the county because the county is having to pay for ambulance services, policing, Narcan drugs for overdose victims, jailing of people that are addicted to these opioids, and so on. And because of that, we're asking the county to become involved in this litigation so that the county can recover those tax dollars that have been basically taken away from the county. Our group of firms represents seven counties in the state of Texas. We represent counties in Maryland, Mississippi, North Dakota, New Mexico, and we represent the Attorney General for the state of Utah in this litigation. And the counties that are close neighbors to you here have already taken action and hired us, Kaufman County, Ellis County, Rockwall County, to name a few. And those are our clients. So we would urge the county to take action on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have now or in executive session.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. You said you're from Dallas, and you only named three counties in the state of Texas. Can you, is Dallas County one of those?
Dallas County is not one of the counties that we represent. We represent Rockwall, Ellis, Kaufman County, Brazos County, Johnson County, Stevens County, and Bailey County.
So is there other representation in Dallas County?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner, if I might add too, there's other representation of other East Texas counties. That does not mean to say that it's limited to only seven Texas counties that's going. I think what you defined is the vast counties in East Texas. I think what Commissioner McCarley is saying is that his law firm does not represent.
Every.
There's reasons for that that I think we can explain.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to let you know, our group, our, the firms that are together with us, one of them is the Motley Rice Law Firm, South Carolina. Joe Rice is the co-lead counsel of this litigation that's been consolidated in the Northern District of Ohio in the federal courts. We are on the leadership of the Texas litigation for the cases that have been filed in state court. Those have been consolidated down in Harris County. So we have, you know, we have the leadership on our team to see this thing through the finish line.
One thing, if you would, in your discussion about the falsehoods spoken, and some convictions have taken place on that. Can you speak to that somewhat?
Sure. I've got a, in the presentation that we sent to you, and we can talk about it later also in more detail, but I've got a slide that outlines specifically. This guy right here is, was the vice president of research for Purdue Pharmaceutical. He testified in front of Congress, in fact, I have a video clip if you'd like to see it, of him testifying on C-SPAN in Congress, saying that opioids are rarely addictive, that a person has less than 1% chance of becoming addicted. Purdue Pharma, along with the other manufacturers, paid for and set up what a society called the American Pain Society. And that American Pain Society went around to doctors and told doctors that, "You're committing malpractice if you don't treat people's pain properly." In fact, in addition to that, we have some other factors that have created this problem. Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act requires that any provider, medical provider, doctor that participates in that plan has to, there's a survey that goes out to the patient, and one of the questions in that survey asked was, "Was your pain properly addressed?" And if the patient says no, that doctor can be removed from the plan and/or not compensated for the treatment. So there's a lot of things that are going on here, but, you know, that have added to the problem creating it. I hope that answered your question.
It did. The point that I saw interesting in this is the fact that this is a failure at the federal level through lobbying efforts, so forth and so on.
Sure.
And setting the stage for prescription.
Exactly. Well, a lot of the, in fact, an attorney in our firm is a former DEA attorney who prosecuted some of the distributors and manufacturers for their failure to meet certain requirements under the Controlled Substances Act. And he tells us that they had, when he was in the DEA, they had over 200 enforcement actions. But what happened was, is that the manufacturers and distributors got together and said, "Hey, we got to put a stop to this." So they started hiring away attorneys out of the DEA and brought them in-house so that they could write, help write legislation to prevent the enforcement of the Controlled Substances Act. In addition to that, now we know that through the Marino Act, which was passed by a voice vote through Congress during the Obama administration, and sold as a piece of legislation that would prevent the manufacturers, or excuse me, prevent the drugs from not getting to elderly people, that we know that that really handcuffed the DEA and prevented them from enforcement. In fact, now, all the manufacturer distributor has to do is, they have to be notified by the DEA before the DEA can take any action that they suspect that there is diversion of opioid drugs or other violations of the Controlled Substances Act. And then all they have to do is write a letter saying, "Hey, we're sorry. This is what we're going to do," and the DEA can't take any action against them. So there's a lot of elements to this, but we think that the county should receive its compensation for, and reimbursement for the funds that the county's expended on this epidemic.
Something similar. Is this somewhat in the nature of the tobacco lawsuits in years past?
It is, except for a couple of differences. This is actually bigger than the tobacco litigation. You're dealing with more companies, distributors, and manufacturers. But as you may recall, in the tobacco litigation, the only litigants in that litigation were states. The counties and cities weren't really a part of that. And I don't know if any of you gentlemen were part of the county government at the time, that those distributions were handed out from the state. But what happened was, is the state received a recovery, and then the state, as they saw fit, handed out small amounts to the counties and cities. And so in this litigation, though, the difference is, the damages that have been caused by this epidemic are right here. Not necessarily, the state does have a claim for Medicaid reimbursement, but counties are expending money through policing, morgue services, addiction recovery services, jailing, all of that. And that's not, that wouldn't be able to be reimbursed through a state action. That's the difference.
Has it been determined if there's any correlation between, as you said, the opioid epidemic, and then the movement to the manufacture of other drugs? Since the opioid couldn't be obtained, does that lead to crack meth, in which we have a constant problem that we're trying to eradicate in Henderson County?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You're exactly right. In fact, 83% of opioid addicts transition to other drugs like heroin. And the reason is, is because at a certain point, an individual loses their healthcare coverage, or the prescriptions just become too expensive for them because they quit working. They become an unproductive member of Henderson County. And therefore, they go to illicit legal drugs because they're cheaper, and they can get the same type of high from that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I did.
Any further questions? Okay. Mr. Gisela?
Well, I guess there's a comment. You brought up the tobacco lawsuits. And the opening comment made is almost identical, which Reynolds and American and the other tobacco cigarette manufacturers said the same thing. Only difference was cigarettes and cigars and snuff and other tobacco products were never, I'll repeat that, were never approved by the FDA. Now, the FDA got involved later on when they suspected there might be a problem. But in the case of what we're talking about here today, these were drugs that, before they could ever be marketed, ran through the Federal Drug Administration for approval. Am I correct?
That is correct. Yep. That is correct. And our, the objective of litigation is to not get rid of opioids. Opioids have an appropriate place in the practice of medicine and the treatment of individuals, especially cancer patients with breakthrough cancer pain. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get the manufacturers and distributors to adhere to their obligations under the Controlled Substances Act and kind of turn down the spigot on the supply of this. The United States, we're about 7% of the world's population, but we consume 80% of the world's opioids. That's a problem. And so what we have is, we have a supply problem. We have these drugs that are being over-prescribed because that's what doctors were told to do, and, but by the manufacturers, who they rely on to tell them the appropriate use for the drug. And we've discussed some other reasons for it, too. You know, healthcare plans that require doctors to, their patients to fill out or answer questions in a survey. So those type of things have certainly added to the problem and created the problem. And that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to get rid of opioids.
But at the same time, we've been at war for nearly 15 years, and the amount of veterans that come back from those conflicts with terrible injuries are prescribed these type of drugs, which then become addicted.
Right.
To these drugs.
Exactly. And we don't know, they don't have a scientific way to tell whether your brain, or your brain might be susceptible to addiction. When I've taken opioids in the past, I broke my collarbone in eight places riding a mountain bike and had surgery on it, and it was really painful. They prescribed me some opioids after the surgery, and they make me sick. They make me nauseated. I don't, I don't like them. But some people's brain, when they take opioids, they feel euphoria, euphoria feeling in their brain. And their brain likes the feeling and says, "You know what? My body feels good when I take this." And they have propensity to become addicted to the drugs, drugs that are prescribed by a doctor. Yep.
Any further questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Judge, I have something to ask.
Yes.
Just one thing, I know that this was a question that I had, and I know I've been in discussions with the law firm, but one question I think is important for the public to understand, too, is what would we, we will be entertaining in executive session later on will actually be a contingency fee agreement, which means it will come at zero cost to the county for not only the legal representation, but any legal expenses that may be incurred, which means if they do not recover on our behalf, it costs our taxpayers zero to engage. Again, I know that was a question that had come up, and I think that's important for the public to understand. This agreement, too, is unique from ones that I've seen in the past, and it even has an indemnity clause on behalf of the county, which means that they are agreeing to not only identify us, but to defend us in the event that we have any counterplans that may come back against the county. And again, I know we're going to meet on that and kind of go through some of the pictures and probably definitely ask Mr. McCarley and Mr. Beers some questions about all of that, but I did want to point that out in the public portion, that this is a no-cost agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, but let me just add one thing to that. In addition to that, we will be fronting all the expenses of this litigation. The county will never write us a check for any part of this litigation. If we lose, the county owes us no reimbursement for the expenses of this litigation. We'll eat it all.
Okay. Any further questions?
Not just yet.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks, commissioners.
And with that, we will be moving later on in our agenda into executive session to discuss contract issues concerning this. Item number 10, receive financial reports. Thank you, sir. We have reports from JP2 and JP2. These will be available for viewing after court in the clerk's office.
Four and two, you said?
No, sir. Both of them, both reports are JP2 reports. Item 11, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. Questions?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve biweekly number four. Payroll totals, $796,335.88.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisela, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the payroll distributions. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor? Anything else, Nicky? Okay, thank you. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Thank you. Item 13, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Not this one? Item 15, consider and take action on payment of bills. Rebecca?
Yes, sir. I have to reset the bills today. And the first one's for 2018. I have a total of $11,500. And the first one for two thousand eighteen, I have a total of eleven thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tootley.
No questions.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Giesel?
It's, I assume in the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing the budget amendments for two thousand eighteen. I mean, the healthcare is probably the worst one that we have to clean up.
That's one more evening.
Yeah, I understand. No other comments, Judge?
Thank you. No further comments, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, seconded by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the fiscal year eighteen bills of eleven thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor. Item passes.
Yes, sir. This week I also have the January sales tax, the amount of six hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tootley?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCam?
No.
Commissioner Giesel?
No questions on the sales tax.
Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the sale tax bills for January of nineteen, in the amount of six hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. All those in favor? Item passes. Next.
The total this week for two thousand nineteen is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
That was a mouthful. Commissioner Thomas?
No, Ms. Michael answered my question before court.
Commissioner Tootley?
No questions.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Giesel?
Is everything cleaned up in the library, Judge, after the pipe sump pump, or whichever it was that failed?
Yes, sir.
Cleaning service?
It is.
Is the ozone generator still operational over there?
Yes, sir. The air scrubber is working downstairs now, as we dry everything out. That one is on loan. We have purchased one that-
We had one over there.
Right. But now, we're going to have a larger one
Okay.
that can, I believe it's seventeen, seventeen hundred square feet, that will work much better at really controlling any of the residue smell from the spill.
Okay. I was also reading that something else we could try over there after we get everything dried out. In that particular dirt room, they say that if you cover that with plastic, that will also, because if the open dirt kind of allows that musty smell, and if you cover it with some type of plastic and tack it down, it will help alleviate that smell that we've bought in that library for some time. So with the ozone generator, and we're getting everything dried out.
Yes, sir. And hopefully, one of the issues besides the damage, you know, is the groundwater
Yes.
that tries to come in there.
Yep.
And that's going to be a continual battle.
So it was a new sump pump that we put in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It might be something to consider.
Agreed.
Putting in a second sump pump, so that we have a backup, so this, the probability of this happening, again, is greatly reduced.
Agreed.
I always like to eliminate those single points of failure. No further questions on the bills?
With that, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the two thousand nineteen bills of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. All those in favor? Item sixteen, consider and take action on submitted plats.
Please report.
Commissioner Giesel?
This is a, what I generally refer to as a plain vanilla replat within the Safari Waters subdivision, which is on US 175 east of Loop. This particular replat is taking lot four twenty-nine and four twenty-eight, ten point oh seven nine acres, and three point three two five acres respectively, and combining them into lot four twenty-nine A. As the county clerk just stated, all the fees have been paid, taxes are paid, nine-one-one stamp and flood plain stamp are attached. If anyone would like to see this plain vanilla replat of these two lots, I'll be happy to pass them down for your review.
Jim?
Hearing no questions from the court, I move that we approve the replat of lots four twenty-eight and four twenty-nine into lot four twenty-nine A, for a total acreage of thirteen acres, point four oh nine.
I'll second the motion.
What subdivision is that?
Safari Waters. This is for filing purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the replat in Safari Waters, creating lot four twenty-nine A.
Hey.
Any further comments? No, for filing purposes only?
I said that.
Yes. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Item seventeen, open and consider bids.
Have none.
Item eighteen, convening to executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one, consult with attorneys on pending and/or anticipated legal action on behalf of the county. Gentlemen, can we have a time and a motion?
So moved to ten fifteen. Or ten ten. Ten ten.
Ten ten.
Is that a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ten ten is a second, yes.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to convening to executive session at ten ten AM. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor? Thank you much. We will-
Can't fix it.
You'll have to see that once they call in.
Motion to return to open session.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Gieslin, to close executive session and return to open session. All those in favor? Item passes. Item nineteen, considering take action on entering into a contract for legal representation in the ongoing federal opioid litigation and based upon discussions held in the executive session. For the record, we discussed contract issues and discussed structure and flow of how the lawsuit will, good lord, will work. Is there any comments that anyone would like to make at this time?
One of the things I think we should point out is in lieu of signing the contract, a most favored nation's clause should be added before the contract would be executed if the court so desires.
To exercise such contract.
And the contract costs the county nothing?
gentlemen?
Zero. County will never write us a check.
Any further comments? Well, I will go on record as saying I believe it is something that we need to do, given the very limited and zero liability, plus all of the indemnities that are guaranteed in the contract. I believe the addition of that clause of the most favored nation's clause is the best thing in the county's interest, so.
I move.
Are you ready?
Was that, was that a motion to execute the, can we, can we modify that just a little bit?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to make the motion?
That'd be great.
Okay, I move that we execute the contract with your law firm.
I'd say various law firms, because there are several listed in here.
Various law firms concerning opioid litigation with the contract that we had before us modified to add most favored nation clause after receiving such contract authorization for the judge to sign. Did you get all that, Mayor Margaret?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gieslin, second by Commissioner McCam, to enter into the above mentioned contract with the amendments. Any further discussion?
With authorization for the judge to sign. For the judge to sign after receiving such set amendments.
Any further discussion?
Can't fix it.
Tell them to say that once they call in.
Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
So, second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Gisland, to close executive session and return to open session. All those in favor? Item passes. Item nineteen, consider and take action on entering into a contract for legal representation in the ongoing federal opioid litigation and based upon discussions held in the executive session. For the record, we discussed contract issues and discussed structure and flow of how the lawsuit will, good lord, will work. Is there any comments that anyone would like to make at this time?
One of the, one of the things I think we should point out is in lieu of signing the contract, a most favored nations clause should be added before the contract would be executed if the court so desires. To execute, to exercise such contract.
And the contract costs the county nothing?
Gentlemen?
Zero. County will never write us a check.
Any further comments? Well, I will go on record as saying I believe it is something that we need to do, given the very limited and zero liability, plus all of the indemnities that are guaranteed in the contract. I believe the addition of that clause, of the most favored nations clause, is the best thing in the county's interest, so.
So moved. Are you ready?
Was that, was, was that a motion to execute the, can we, can we modify that just a little bit?
Go ahead.
You want me to make the motion?
That'd be great.
Okay. I move that we execute the contract with your law firm.
I'd say various law firms, because there are several listed in here.
Various law, law firms concerning opioid litigation with the contract that we had before us modified to add most favored nation clause after receiving such contract authorization for the judge to sign. Did you get all that, Mayor Margaret?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to enter into the above-mentioned contract with the amendments. Any further discussion?
With authorization for the judge to sign.
With authorization for judge to sign.
For the judge to sign after receiving such, said amendments.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item twenty, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Tuley, second by Commissioner Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor? We stand adjourned.